Have everybody's attention, please. Pastor Matt is with us.
Absolutely. Sorry I missed you guys last month when I was out of town. Just wanted to let you know, DDS is next week for a lot of churches in our community. So you could come to Holy Cross. You could go to Christ the King. You could go to a lot of different places. I want to encourage you, if you've got kids, check it out. A lot of different places, a lot of different opportunities. So, I'm Pastor Matt from Holy Cross. Thanks for... That'd be great. That's great. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks that you've given us blessings in this life, that we can steward and share those blessings with others. Blessings of intelligence, of leadership. Lord, I pray especially for these who are gathered here today. Would you give them some wisdom and some might to be able to lead our community forward? We pray through the Holy Spirit in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. Let's do the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Karen, do you want to do roll call, please?
Excuse me. Oh, sorry. Bailey.
Here.
Basardi.
Here.
Dolan.
Excused.
Helmut.
Here.
Kenneth.
Excused.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Dolan and Councilmember Kenneth.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. I want to make one change. Under number 13, I want to add a thing for chiefs' report. So that'll be 14. 14 will be 15, 15, 16, 16, 17.
Did we get under 7B, did we get number four and number five? The budget report and the ad hoc committee reports?
No. I didn't see them in my packet.
No, they are not in the packet.
Thank you.
So we can...
Remove.
Remove those. And also, under public hearing, it says none. But don't we have the zoning amendment? Because I've got a thing back here that says that we are having one.
We're having a first reading under 8B, right?
We held the public hearing at the planning commission level. So we just have to do the ordinance reading.
Okay, so just the first reading.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
But there's no other questions to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign. We have no presentations, no public hearings. Call to the public on non-agenda items. Consent agenda 7A, receive and file items.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to receive and file consent agenda items A.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign. And then we go to 7B, the approval items.
Again, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda item B, including the bills in the amount of $96,565,29.
Whatever that amount was, I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. Karen, do you want to do roll call, please?
If I may. With regard to approval of the minutes, I know that Councilmember Dolan, I believe, provided some comments that he would like noted in the minutes. Though he's not here to present them, maybe the minutes can be approved with those comments noted, or to have the comments returned, or the minutes returned to your next meeting with those comments attached.
I received the changes.
I did too.
Included, that would be included in my motion to approve. I gave them today and pointed out the differences.
Yes, I'm aware of those. So the approval is with the changes.
With the amendments. Correct.
All right.
Okay, Karen, do you want to do roll call, please?
Basardi.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
And given that there's more than one version of the bill amount, you can check it against the one that Maureen has.
Yes, the 96. Yes.
I'm assuming that Maureen says correct.
It included.
Okay, unfinished business. They receive a report from the manager search committee. Bob?
Well, I think we can all...
Or James.
Or we can all chime in. Maybe you can, at this point, take the lead.
Sure. Happy to report that the manager search committee has met a few times since our last meeting. I've had the opportunity to review resumes received for the position. The search committee's had a discussion about the resumes received. I've actually had the opportunity to talk to a few of the candidates, and we have identified a candidate for interview. We will be scheduling a special meeting of the village council for that interview for Thursday of this week at 5:30. We'll confirm that with the candidate. We will post it as a public meeting once it's confirmed. So we are progressing through the village manager search process quite well. And, you know, as we confirm that candidate for interview, obviously, we'll be releasing more information as we continue to go through that process. Hopefully, that summarizes the actions of the committee thus far. I'd be happy to take questions.
Yeah. Either you or some other people on the committee have met this person?
I have spoken to the person, yes.
Good. Face to face or on the phone?
On the phone.
On the phone, okay.
And we will all be meeting. You will all be meeting.
Sure.
Yeah. I can also give a brief update on the clerk's position, if it's okay with the President. We've received a number of applications for that position. We will begin reviewing those in earnest immediately following the village manager process. So we want to involve the eventual new village manager, him or her, in that selection or review process. But our intent is to roll right into it without much delay.
Okay. And the first reading, proposed zoning ordinance?
The planning commission spent a lot of really awful hours on this.
Chuck can attest to that.
And they really put a lot of time, a lot of thought into this. A lot of people were involved. So I'm very confident with the changes.
I will intake the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the proposed zoning ordinance and zoning map recommendations as presented.
I will support that.
Now, do we have to attach a date, when we're going to do the second and final?
Second reading will be at the next...
Meeting in July?
Yeah, the next, first meeting in July.
Okay.
And it would also be subject to approval that time.
July 11th, if you wish to note it.
I'm going to include that in your motion, you guys.
Would the second reading be held during the first regular meeting in July? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
Karen knew exactly what I meant.
Of course.
Okay. We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. Karen, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Helmut.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Basardi.
Yes.
Okay, new business. Oh, consideration of the request from Fiber Tech Network.
Counsel, we tabled this in the last meeting, just so I could verify a couple of ordinance compliance issues with the proposal. You already have an agreement in place with Fiber Tech, and it says the village manager will execute these types of modifications routinely, and that a request for this type of modification cannot be unreasonably denied. So I spoke to Fiber Tech. I spoke with a few other communities. This is in line with an appropriate modification, and I would recommend that it be approved in the format presented, signed by the village manager, and returned to Fiber Tech.
I have no questions.
Nor am I.
I need a motion.
Give me a second. I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the right-of-way telecommunications permit for Fiber Tech with the acting village manager, James McTrano, signed behalf of the village, upon his approval of the village attorney. I'll support all of that.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. Karen, can you do a roll call, please?
Bailey.
Yes.
Basardi.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Okay. B, consideration of a request to enter into an agreement with Verizon cell tower, cellular phone service. James?
Thank you. As noted in my attached report, the village had its cell phones through Wireless Toys in downtown Oxford. Unfortunately, Wireless Toys appears to be, well, doesn't appear, they are out of business, and they've been unable to be contacted. Our service was a prepaid service, so we had cellular service through about mid-June. We don't anticipate that we will have service after that. I've worked with Verizon Services. They have a government contract. It's a national contract that we can, what I'll call, piggyback on. The fees have been pre-negotiated by a state contract. It happens to be the state of Nevada that negotiated it, but it's available to all municipalities in the United States at set pricing for all municipalities. The pricing that we've been offered is for, or that is part of the contract, is $49.35 for the first phone and $35.99 for those after, which shared in pool minutes and associated discounts. Traditionally, the community has had three cellular phones. You've had one assigned to the village manager's office, one assigned to the DDA, which also serves as its primary number, and one assigned to the DPW. I'm suggesting in my memo that you also assign one to the police department, specifically to be carried by the chief or the acting chief, because it's fundamentally necessary for him to perform his duties to be available via cellular phone. My suggestion, or my request, is that you approve to take action to enter into the agreement with Verizon Wireless, as noted in my memo, to purchase three phones to start, which would be DDA, DPW, and Police Department, and the fourth phone for the new village manager, when appointed, can be added at any time. That's the term of the contract. I'd be happy to take any questions. The requested action is to authorize, as noted in the memorandum attached.
James, does the DDA keep their same phone that they hand?
Yes, not phone, but all numbers will be ported to the new phone provided by Verizon.
They'll get a new unit, though.
Right, correct.
Okay. And the DPW, too?
Correct. It will be all new Verizon units. The units or phones are included in the plan, so that monthly includes the phones themselves. And it's either the latest iPhone or the newest Samsung, and they're renewed every year with a new device. That's part of the contracted price and requirements of the contract.
Okay. Phil?
Is there a term on that, one year, two years, three years, or...?
There's no term for the local government. They have to provide, I believe it's 30 days notice that they wish to terminate service, pay all outstanding invoices. If there were credits assigned because of some credit special that the government had negotiated at any time, that's being afforded to the whole pool, then those would have to be prorated back.
Are there unlimited minutes?
There is an unlimited minutes for... Let me get this straight.
You know what, I can come in and...
Yeah, please do.
I will come in and talk to you.
Yeah, there are different levels, both for unlimited data and unlimited minutes. And there's also a pool, depending on the number of phones that you pool into the plan. It's a program that I think we won't be in jeopardy of minutes, but if someone needs more, it may be a different plan under the government purchasing.
My only concern is that we have a major crime, whether it be murder or whatever, those minutes can occur. So I've got to look out. I've got five phones. I probably should have come out, but thank you, Sue, for your help. I will come in and talk to you, James.
Yeah.
It sounds pretty interesting.
I've managed a number of phones under this same contract, and because it's the national pricing and you have your local government rep, and it's very, they work very closely with you, and the pricing is not something that's bantered. It's published, it's there, it is. And so whatever service, from unlimited to something very, very basic, I've been satisfied in my past work with Verizon on this.
I'll make a motion to enter an agreement with Verizon Cellular Phone Services for three phones currently, with the possible addition of a fourth phone when we're back at full staffing level.
I'll support that. My comment is that the motion applies regardless whether the number of phones at the moment is three or four. In other words, we don't have to do it again because we want to get the fourth phone.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bailey. Karen, can you do a roll call, please?
Bailey.
Yes.
Basardi.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
And we go down to C, consideration of requests from acting police chief regarding enforcement questions.
Good evening, Agent Auto Chief Mike Solwal, Village of Oxford. There is a request that was made regarding some parking issues in the Oxford Lakes area. So I put together a packet, if you guys have it there, write-up on what those questions were. One of them was commercial vehicles parked on the side of roads for residents that may work in the commercial field, parking the vehicles on the side of the road. We don't currently have ordinance to that effect. That's something about now to sit down and talk about. We wanted to work on it together. Thing we need to think about is that if we do think about doing that, we have to think about the type of vehicles that we're going to talk about. There are some folks that do drive home with commercial vehicles at noon overnight, so they could be just a roadway, or they could not be in the driveway as well, for residents. So that's something we need to talk about. The other question that came up was parking on the fire hydrant side of the road in Oxford Lakes. That's always been sort of an issue with that subdivision. There's always been a question on whether we can enforce that, because there's not technically signs along roadway where the fire hydrants are. It's just posted on north and south entrances of the subdivision. And then the other question was vehicles parked on the driveways in the residential driveway or sidewalks. So folks, when they're walking down the sidewalk, they'll walk around the cover. That does happen on occasion. What we try to do, because a lot of folks, they have different events that go on with graduations, what have you. We try to find a source. We go to the house and we try to educate them, and ask them, hey, this is a concern. We have all these vehicles on this side of the road, so please, everybody, please move them and get them on one side of the road, because the worst vehicle is to go through there, and it's just not going to fit through there. And it's a concern. Instead of getting the ticket book out, we can write all the tickets for everybody. We found it more effective to get out and talk to the folks and just kind of educate them and say, hey, listen, I know you guys are here to function here, so let's get on the same page here, we're on one side of the road. So we've been trying to do that. We've also taken the other piece of action as far as giving tickets on windows. And then we get flooded by calls the next day, and people concerned about our actions and our time, and what we should be doing, and whenever we mess, and how long we live and how. So the course of action we've been trying to take over time is just trying to talk with people, find out the source, and try to educate them, and try to work it out that way as much as we can. But if it's something that we're going to sit down and talk about, we should think about signage. And then you get into the issue of, does everybody want to be signed all down the roads as far as the parking? That's something that you guys will have to discuss and come to the agreement on, and Bob and I will sit down and talk about that, and we'll get that problem resolved. Is there any questions?
What are we going to consider a commercial vehicle?
What are we going to consider? That's something we have to sit down and talk about, because there's different sizes. We're talking about a big vehicle, we're talking about just a van with writing on it. So...
There's a couple, if you look through all the village ordinances, there's a couple different definitions, and they're not the same.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's got to really pick one and stick with it.
Right, yeah. And I can understand if somebody is one of those giant big rig parked on the side of the road, I can understand that. But as far as a van or a commercial vehicle, or just a regular car, maybe it has markings on it, that's considered commercial. So you guys can think about that and try to be careful about it.
Well, you know, whatever you're going to do, you have to, because I know that there are truck drivers within the village who park their big rigs out in front of their house or on the side of their house. So, and that's been going on for years. So, everybody has to be treated the same.
Exactly.
And if that's your livelihood, and you have no other place to park it, and then there's one who lives over in meager apartments, who parks his and uses up numerous parking spaces in the parking lot over here, so...
We'll sit down, and we'll come up with a good idea, and we should get to the details of the problem.
As far as, because I know I brought it up before, parking on the hydrant, or not parking on the hydrant side of the street. There are several spots in the village where you can't drive down the street with an emergency vehicle, because people are parked on each side of the street, and with these big trucks now with the mirrors that stick out a foot off the cabs, and they're double cabs plus the extended back of the pickup, you can't get through hardly. I drive a Ford Focus, and I can't. I'm going through the cars and the trucks very carefully, because I'm afraid I'll tear off my side mirrors. So if we're going to do it, then it needs to be something that's going to be enforced throughout the village.
I agree. I agree. I think that's fair. And I encourage that if there are issues like that, or folks that call the police, so we can get out there and get that proper. I know I could have the same issue on my own street where I live here in the village as well. And I've actually had to talk to my own neighbors to try to, hey, listen, I know you guys are here to function, we got all these cars on the side of the road, and to make sure that... And that was the biggest concern, is to get it worked there.
Right. But I'm not talking about special functions. That is one thing. But I'm talking on a daily basis. There are streets in Oxford that this is occurring all day.
And you know, that's the case. It is a daily...
All evening.
Then it's time that we go knocking on, and they're going to say, hey, listen, for us, if you've been doing this to allow, it needs to change. If not, then it would be a citation for the issue for that.
Okay. I'll start calling when I'm driving down the street, then.
Please do. Call me if there's any other questions.
Okay, I will. All right.
More questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Number 10, we didn't have any public comment. Managers' report.
Can provide a very brief report. I appreciate the cooperation I'm receiving from village council members, as well as staff in my short time here so far. I think we've, there's three things that over the last, since we've met last, that we've really focused on, at least my time, are the major things of our bond refinance, which closes tomorrow, and we're prepared and have executed all documents necessary to close on the bond refinancing. The closing of the Glasby property, I'll let Sue do the pom-pom cheerlead on that. I wasn't as excited as her, but it is very cool that that is a complete transaction, and that was completed earlier this week, or late last week. And then finally, we've begun in earnest, and again, Sue was there, on the M24 project meetings with MDOT. So today was, I won't call it a kickoff meeting, because I know there's several meetings that the village has been part of for that significant 2019 project, but today was the first time when the village staff had the opportunity to talk about the design and design elements, and what, from curb to curb, the street traffic patterns would start to look like under the new project. We haven't yet ventured on the other side of the curb for street furniture and those types of improvements. But certainly, the village planner and our consultants on the project represented themselves very well, and represented the village's interests very well in this morning's meeting. And now, we're waiting for information from MDOT in response to a number of questions that were raised. 2019 sounds like it's a long time away, but it will come quick, and I think the village will start to see, probably almost on a monthly basis, an opportunity to participate in the project with MDOT. Sue, hopefully I hit all those points okay.
Got them all.
Sue?
Bill?
Do you want to, or other members?
No.
Only if you come to the microphone.
Oh.
I know. We just wanted to show off your legs.
Thank you. I just want to talk about Mike Solwal. I've been dealing with him since I've been the chief, and I'm pretty impressed. He's reached out, and they've reached both ways, whether it's the Sheriff Department or the village police, to work together to protect everyone. It's refreshing to hear now, because I didn't feel that before. I'm not going to badmouth anyone, but again, it's refreshing to see two departments working together to not only protect us, but to protect each other, because they're brothers. And they're all there to protect us. And again, I would probably need to take the ear tag off. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We have no clerk comment. Chief report. Do you have anything more to add?
I don't want to.
Counsel comments? Mo?
Memorial Day prayed, fabulous is always loved it. Are we having any problems with the new trash haulers now that they're under new ownership?
We, not to my knowledge, we've not received issues.
I wouldn't think we would, but...
Yeah.
And do we have hiring a police chief on the horizon anytime soon? A full-time, permanent police chief? Is that on anyone's horizon?
Yes. Yes, we can certainly work with the village president, as well as the attorney, to place that on a future upcoming agenda.
Well, I've actually met with Mike Solwal and have begun discussing if it were to happen, what the terms of a contract would look like, and so we've begun that process. And I suggest strongly that that issue be at one of your July meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for missing the previous meeting. I had, I guess you'd call it family complications, which needed to be addressed, and so I went and addressed it. It was good news for me that I could help out the people that needed help, rather than bad news. Oh, no, what's going on here? So that's good. So that's all I got.
Okay. I guess I'll ask Bob, because I'm sure that James doesn't know about this. Where do we stand with the one grease hauler?
Actually, when you asked the question about the waste hauler, I've been communicating with the new company. They have a complete understanding of the routes, and I don't think there's been any glitches, and there shouldn't have a lot of public problems. But I'm working with them on the single grease hauling concept as well.
Okay.
And they picked up that service for me. I had a real issue in a much more congested downtown community in Royal Oak, and we were able to get that grease under control. So I'm going to keep working with them and try to bring something back that would amend their contract for that.
Okay. And then, when are we going to get a status report on the Helm property?
Oh, we do, I had been updating village manager, I guess, before, before we got a new interim village manager. We had some progress on that. That closing is going to occur. We already have a court order that when the property is sold, it gets demolished. I met with their lawyers twice now, and Mr. Helm has made the step to sell the property, the documents are in place, we're just waiting for the closing. And we already went to court, you already have a court order that says upon the consummation of the sale, at no expense to you, because if you recall, you didn't want to pay for demolition, they have to fund an immediate demolition within 30 days. So I will check, I will have a closing date, hopefully shortly, on that.
Okay.
But, yeah, I had been updating Joe on that, and I apologize you didn't get that information.
Okay. And then, where do we stand with the shield for the light in the parking lot at Merge? Does anybody know?
I don't know about that.
James, can you check on that?
I will.
Yeah.
This has been an ongoing issue for, what, two years? If not, more?
At least.
More.
Yeah. So if you could find out about that. And that's all I have. We don't have a closed session tonight?
No, but we will, I will be asking for a closed session at the first meeting in July.
Okay. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:04.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helms, supported by Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign.